Okay, today is Tuesday, February 23rd, 2016. I call a village board meeting in order. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Zarnik.
Here.
Trustee Frankie.
Here.
Trustee Listener.
Here.
Trustee Petry.
Here.
Trustee Prochnow.
Here.
Um, all board members are present, and more importantly...
Nope.
Our...oh, I'm sorry, we have a quorum. Trustee Feichter's not here tonight. But, see, that's overshadowing because we have a return visit from our attorney, Mr. Bill Payne, um, who did such a great job that he is back again, and we're looking forward to another outstanding, informative, and more importantly, a well...how do I word this? I want to word it just right.
Careful.
I know, let me think about that. I'm gonna word this. I want to do it exactly right, so we'll get back to it. Mr. Nickebacher's probably going, "He can't say 'cause he can't think of the word." So, he's right. Uh, so, we do have a quorum tonight. Uh, next, we're gonna have the pledge allegiance, and we have invocation night from Pastor Ed McCutcheon, um, from the Prince of Peace United Methodist Church. So, if everyone could please stand. Pastor, if you would, please.
Let us pray. Holy and Almighty God, we praise you for this day and for all the wonderful things that you have blessed us. We thank you for the gifts of family, friends, and neighbors. Thank you for your traveling mercies and for gathering us here tonight. We thank you for one another and give thanks for our mayor, Craig Johnson, the Board of Trustees, and all those who are serving the village to keep this town a safer place for the people of Elk Grove. Be with Mayor Craig Johnson as he presides at this meeting. May the board accomplish their goals tonight for the good of the village and for the residents of the town. Bless everyone here and all the people of Elk Grove. Help those who are struggling tonight. Bless Elk Grove with your peace, and may this town be a place of peace, love, and acceptance for everyone. We pray all these things in your name. Amen.
Amen. The flags to my right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated. Uh, Pastor, hang on. I want to thank you for taking the time to come tonight. Um, we got some nice dark chocolate, so it's healthy for your logos.
Well, thank you very much.
So, give you a little energy when you go back, and, um, appreciate it. Say hi to the pastor first.
Will do.
Thank you very much.
Is that what it is? Boy, we bought this gas station the other day. It was quite a...
Okay, move on now to the approval of the minutes of February 9th, 2016.
I move that we approve the minutes, and dispense with the reading.
Second, we have motion by Trustee Petry. Second by Trustee Zarnik. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Let the record show you an ass approval. Move on to the mayor and Board of Trustees' report tonight. Um, just a few items tonight to go over. Uh, February 16th, um, we had a chance to meet with Alexine Brothers Hospital, Mr. Elmalai, uh, give updates, what's going on at the hospital. You know, we had all the change with the meter and all the rest, and, um, things have been going well. We met with, um, John Warburg, the CEO of the hospital, and the hospital's doing very well, and, um, looking to constantly improve services, and, um, actually probably expand services as time goes on here in the village. Um, also, on February 18th, I had a chance to meet with, um, Chris Nelson off Comcast, the government outreach, um, uh, director, and, um, just letting us know what changes they're working on, uh, the ways of trying to always improve service here in the community and throughout the area. And, um, Comcast's doing very well, but constantly looking for ideas, thoughts, how to give even better service than they have in the past. Um, also had an update with our marketing people on the 18th. Um, as you know, we're still moving forward with our, um, Makers Won a campaign here in Elk Grove, um, with baseball coming up very soon, the Cubs games. You'll be seeing a lot more of our commercials out there, and when watching Hawks lately, you'll see our commercials pop up on the billboards. Um, we're around, and, uh, we're actually looking to change things a little bit, and we're excited about our marketing plan that we have coming up over the rest of the year. And finally, this morning, we had a suburban hair commission meeting, um, working with JDA's, we move forward, uh, working with Chicago, uh, to Chicago's credit, and, uh, CDA, Chicago Department of Aviation, uh, they've been very cooperative working with us, and, um, as we work through a fly-quiet program coming up this summer, uh, we're optimistic that we can do a program that gives a fair spreading of the impact of noise throughout the region, not concentrated in one area and not in another area. Um, and we're looking at this summer doing a six-month trial basis of what we think can be the best way to approach it. And what it's gonna do is we're gonna do a lot of feedback from the communities as far as how they felt, was it better, was it worse, um, and ideas how maybe make it better. So, um, we're hoping that come May or June, we'll roll out our first, um, rotation plans, see how our impact is, see what kind of change we can make, and, uh, by the fall, maybe start nailing this down and maybe come up with a good plan to minimize the impact we have. Remember, though, this'll only be for about three or four years till that last runway's built, then we're gonna have to do another rotation plan, take into account that runway. So, this summer, keep your ears open, give us feedback what's going on, and, uh, we'll see if we can make it even better as time goes on. I see none in the press here tonight, but, uh, we are going to announce our band for our tree lighting ceremony, uh, coming up in November. Uh, we're gonna have the Buckingham's, where we'll be providing the Christmas music this year. Uh, the Buckingham's have had numerous number-one hits, they were on for a while. They actually do a Christmas show, uh, with a horn section and all the rest, where we get in the full band, and should be a very good turnout for the tree lighting ceremony. Last year, Lee DeWise did very well. We're excited about bringing the Buckingham's here to, uh, get this holiday season started on the right foot here in Elk Grove. And finally, obviously, it's no secret, people have seen him, uh, Caputo's is closed here in Elk Grove. Um, we're upset as anybody else to lose him. Um, we did not expect it either when we got word of it. We got word right before it got out publicly. Obviously, it's in the hands of the courts right now, their issues. Um, we wish the Caputo's the best of luck. Um, we should've been a different outcome, and, uh, like I say, a lot of people said, "Well, you know, they shouldn't..." They honestly, they invested a lot of money in the Elk Grove store. If they thought that was coming, they would never have done that. Uh, Nat Caputo is a very nice, hard-working gentleman. Uh, Caputo people were very good people. We feel bad for the people that had jobs there. Um, our hope is that we do find someone else to take that spot over. We have heard from a number of, uh, potential grocers, but because of things in the court system, it may be a while before something's ironed out that we get moving forward. But, we're gonna continue to work hard, continue to find someone to fill that space, and vass another grocery store here in Elk Grove Village. And that completes my report tonight. What do you think, Mr. Payne? Good job?
Wonderful job.
Now, did you hear that? A wonderful...what more could you ask from fine counsel like that than a one...oh, okay. Thank you, Mr. Payne.
You're welcome.
I appreciate it. Move on, Trustees' report. We'll start with Trustee Zarnik.
Thank you. Uh, I just wanted to mention that, uh, on Saturday, February 13th, Trustee Prochnow and I attended an Eagle Scout Court of Honor Ceremony, uh, of Scott Gurrich and William Wright. How proud Troop 495 must be to have, um, two more Eagle Scouts. How fortunate Elk Grove is to look forward to the development of these fine young men. Congratulations, Scott and William. And just to remind you, the applications for the Frank Zarnik Scholarship are available at Conant and Elk Grove High School and online, and there are six 1,000 grants for the Elk Grove residents. Cut-off date is April 22nd, so apply, and hopefully, we can assist you in your college expenses. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Trustee Zarnik. Trustee Feichter.
Thank you. I'm gonna do, um, my own report, but I also have a few things to report for Trustee Feichter, who couldn't be here this evening. Um, he asked me to remind everybody that this Saturday, February 27th, is the Elk Grove Lions Trivia Night Contest. Benefits go to the site and hearing impaired. It's also one of our 60th anniversary events. It will be held at the Elk Grove Park District Garden Terrace Room, as I said again, this Saturday. Doors open at 6:00 P.M. Sign up as a team of eight. Games start at 7:00. Bring dinner and/or snacks, and there'll be a cash bar with beer, wine, and soda, free coffee the whole night long. There's cash prizes for winning the trivia table. There's a cash award for the best dressed decorated table, and there's a 50/50 raffle and gift basket raffle. Um, space is limited, so to register, please call Lion Lenore Zumf at 847-985-0381. Sounds like a fun evening. Don't miss it. Um, Trustee Feichter also asked me to announce that this is part of the North...meet Chicago Northwest Restaurant Week, and restaurants within the...within the organization, I think there's about 30 of them, are celebrating from February 18th through the 28th, and what they do is each of those special restaurants, designated restaurants, is providing a prefixed menu at special rates. So, uh, anybody that's interested in finding out which restaurants that those are, three of which are in Elk Grove, can go to the website, dinechicagonw.com. And then, on my end, I also have...would like to announce the, um, Elk Grove Lioness Club is sponsoring a Betty Erickson Memorial Scholarship. We have two $1,000 awards in the memory of Betty Erickson, a longtime lioness. Uh, the purpose of the scholarship is to recognize high school seniors for their outstanding leadership and community participation. Uh, applications have been sent to Conant, St. Viator, and Elk Grove High School. The eligibility is that you be an, uh, Elk Grove Village resident and a high school senior planning on attending a college, university, or trade school in the fall. Applications, um, are due April 1st, and winners will be notified by May 1st. So, that's another two thousand...two $1,000. I think the Zarnik one is six $1,000 ones. We have several others in the community. If your son or daughter is a senior in high school, they should really be looking for these app...these college, um, scholarship opportunities, because if they write a really good application and an essay, there's a chance they're gonna receive multiple scholarships, and that can add up to thousands of thousands of dollars to put towards their college education. So, look into it. Um, I'd also like to announce that, uh, in conjunction with the 60th anniversary, Castle Chevrolet in Elk Grove Village is donating a Chevy Camaro, and it's being put up for raffle. Uh, as part of the year-long celebration, one lucky winner will drive away with a brand-new 2016 Camaro. Raffle tickets cost $5 each, or five for $20. All proceeds from the raffle will go to community organizations that serve the residents of Elk Grove. Um, we had a meeting last night, and ticket sales, now that we're selling them online, um, have been pretty brisk, so, uh, there's gonna be a lot...a decent amount of money going to help out our community organizations. I...the Rotary is helping us facilitate the sales. You can buy your tickets online at www.2016camaroraffle.com. So, you'll, um, you can order them online. We will also have tables at some of our anniversary events leading up to the drawing in July. And, let's see, one, two, three, four. The last but not least thing is a personal thank-you note to, um, our finance department, our billing department. I own a business in Elk Grove, and I got a call from the billing department last month saying, "We are kind of...we're looking at your water bill, and you're up about 80,000 gallons this water billing period. Is something going on at your place?" And I said, "Not that I know of. What would I be looking for?" And they said, "You know, check your...your plumbing facility, see if you have a leak or something." Sure enough, I walked to the...our bathroom in the back, and there was the teeniest, tiniest little stream of water coming down in the basin, and I...and I said to the lady that called, "That's 80,000 gallons in a billing period?" And she goes, "Yes, it is." And she said, "I just wanted to bring it to your attention. I would not have noticed. They saved me a lot of money, and I really want to say thanks to our Elk Grove employees for taking that extra step and going that extra mile to alert. I'm sure I'm not the only one that they've done that to, so thank you very much." And that concludes my report.
That's nice.
Yeah.
Make sure you pay the bill, though.
That's my daughter's job. I'm personnel.
Trustee Petry.
No report.
Trustee Listener.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, just briefly, I...I have the privilege of attending the, uh...let's see, what is the whole name of it? The Suburban Joint Action Water Agency Meeting in Schaumburg tomorrow evening, and just a couple of items that are on the agenda. First of all, it's a public hearing for the, uh, the new, uh, budget, uh, so I'm sure we'll be mobbed for that. The other thing is, the amount the budget has gone up, has gone up 0.3%. It went from 60,418 dollars...418,759 dollars to 60,575,997 dollars. So, they're...they're being very prudent, and that includes a, unfortunately, another 3% water rate increase from the city of Chicago. And by the way, all the communities have been down using water for the last, uh, let's see, the last nine months, except for two, Hanover Park and Elk Grove. So, apparently, those...some of those new companies in the business park are using a lot of water.
The data center.
Chris is, uh...
Oh, Chris! Yeah, there it is.
80,000 gallons, right there.
Well, there goes this report. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Last, but definitely not least, Trustee Jeffrey Charles Frankie.
I don't know how you top those. I have no report.
No report. Okay. Move on now to accounts payable warrant for February 23rd, 2016.
I move that we pay bills. The accounts payable warrant for February 23rd in an amount of 571,767 dollars and 58 cents.
Second, uh, we have a motion by Trustee Petry, a second by Trustee Zarnik, and no, despite what Mr. Nickebacher may be thinking, that's not Bill Payne's paycheck for tonight. Um, so, Judy, can you call the roll, please?
Trustee Frankie.
Yes.
Trustee Listener.
Aye.
Trustee Petry.
Aye.
Trustee Prochnow.
Aye.
Trustee Zarnik.
Aye.
Motion passes five to nothing. Tonight, we have consent agenda items, A as in...Mr. Payne?
Aristotle. Oh.
Ooh. Greek.
Here it comes.
Wow. Through D as in...
Draconian. Wow.
Whoa.
Somebody's talking.
Right now, George is sitting back in his chair going, "Holy cow." That's...
That's amazing.
That's it. Impressed, Mr. Petzel? See? Excellent.
Thank you.
Okay. We have a motion, uh, we have, um, items A through D. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Trustee Zarnik, second by Trustee Frankie. Any questions, comments from any board members or staff? Anybody in the audience wish to address on the consent agenda? Seeing none, and hearing no objection, record the votes previously demonstrated, seven to nothing. Oh, I'm sorry, seven to nothing.
Six.
Five to nothing. Okay, well, I'm still just draconian. I mean, I'm just still at a loss. I mean, that's impressive. No items on the regular agenda. Capital improvements Committee, Trustee Petry.
No report.
Judiciary Planning, Zoning Committee, Trustee Listener.
No report.
Personnel Committee, Trustee Frankie.
I would like to also say that, uh, we're still looking for, uh, filling some positions for our seasonal help that we hire in the summer. Uh, we're looking for high school graduates who are going to college, uh, they have the need to have the ability to work outside, and Illinois driver's license, and a resident of Elk Grove is preferred. Uh, starting rate is 11.51 an hour, and you will work 10 weeks in the summer. It's a great summer job. Um, if you're interested, go to the village website and look under job applications, download the application, and send it in to HR, which the address is online. Uh, this will probably be the last week I announce it, because they usually fill up pretty quick, so, uh, if you're interested, uh, it's a great job, and you have, uh, first right to, uh, come back the next year if you've hired. So, uh, uh, I know a lot of people have gone through it, and it's helped them pay for their college and some spending money, so, that's all I have.
They get paid better than the board.
Yes, they do. Ah, yes, they do.
They do.
Little crossing guards.
Okay. Um, even though Trustee Feichter's gone, um, we're gonna have a fill-in tonight for the Recycling and Waste Committee report. Trustee Prochnow.
Thank you. Trustee Feichter asks me to give his recycling report tonight. He is reminding all of our residents that, uh, you can still recycle those used Christmas lights that you no longer have a use for, and that Village Hub will be accepting them until the end of March. And that concludes his report.
I thought...I was pretty impressed.
Very concise.
Yeah, that's...
Thank you for your time.
Boy, that was impressive. Thank you for concise.
Was that a rerun?
I tell you, I'm just...it's just amazing. He just continues to impress me, Mr. Payne. I don't...you're right, Trustee Petry. It's a no-brainer choice. You're...I think you're right. Information Committee, once again, Trustee Prochnow.
No report.
Cable Intelligence Committee, the dynamic duo of Trustee Petry and Listener.
No report.
Business Leaders Forum, that dynamic duo, come back for repeat performance, Trustee Listener and Petry.
Couple things. One, uh, with...with the recent weather that's been reasonable, they've been doing...making some pretty good progress on the bussy median, uh, getting things ready, the planters and in, uh, preliminary work, so when the real good weather comes out, I think we should be in good shape. Also, I want to just mention that there's a Business Leaders Forum meeting on March 17th, Thursday, 11 to 1, and that should be down in Room E. And that's all I have.
And those been well attended?
Yes, they have been.
Good. So, the transition from business, um...
Has gone very well.
Industrial commercialization's gone well?
Right.
Good. Okay, you mentioned bussy. I'm sorry I should've brought up. Um, ComEd just gave me an update yesterday. Uh, construction should start by the second week of March, with projection to be completed by the end of March, on target for the bussy dam project. So, keep our fingers crossed that it keeps going. Anything further, um, Steve? Good? Okay. Um, Youth Committee, talking about swimming with the snow coming. Trustee Frankie.
Actually, I'm gonna hold off on the swimming thing, but, uh, I'd like to mention that we have three $1,000 scholarships that are gonna be available. You just need to be an Elk Grove resident. Uh, we have the applications at the high school, so, and also at, uh, Conant and at, uh, I think we sent them to St. Viator also. So, um, you can go online at the village and download the application, but you need to have it in by March 6th. Please do not wait till the last minute. You had them in, um, two $1,000 scholarships from the village and one from the Parks Foundation. So, again, it's one of...
March 6th, really?
Did I say March? May 6th?
Oh, thank you. Good catch, yes. We're like, "Yeah, we don't..."
Well, get them in March 6th. I want them early, anyway, so... Uh, but May 6th is the cutoff date, and we will announce by the end of March who the winners are. Nope, May. Just seeing if you're ready. Uh, so, yes, May. We got...you've got five months, so, um, we'll announce it more until that time, until March 6th, so... Kenny?
I guess I'll need some more on vacation.
I am. I'm ready to get out.
Trustee Frankie, I think we're all kind of...kind of like in awe with the...the presence we have with, uh, Mr. Payne being here, and I understand, we all get kind of, you know, it's like starstruck when, you know, you see such quality and stuff. We're not used to it, so...
Still trying to pronounce the words he's using.
Oh, I mean, it's just...
Draconian, was that right?
It just...I don't know. I just...I'm at a loss for a word sometimes, so we just all take it in...
Right now, I'm lost for a month.
So, we're good. Okay, anything further?
That's it.
Okay. Parade Committee, Trustee Zarnik.
Thank you. Uh, reminding you, the parade, 60th Anniversary Parade is June 18th, be a 5:00 P.M. kickoff, and we're celebrating the theme yesterday, today, and tomorrow. Uh, we've had some responses from couples that are married in 1956 and currently living out Elk Grove, uh, but there's always room for more, because we'd really like you to be part of our parade and, uh, celebrate you as grand marshals, so contact us. And the next parade meeting is Monday, March 7th at 5:30 P.M. Concludes that part of it.
How many couples you up to?
Six. Five. Five or six, I can't remember now.
That's good.
I have to talk to one more, so...
That's good. Okay. Hugh...help...Health and Community Services, Trustee Zarnik.
Thank you. Just, uh, want to remind everybody about the Caring Place. It's a socialization program for adults. It's organized and supervised by trained and caring staff. The program is available on Mondays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays from 9:30 a.m. till 3:30 p.m. at Christas Victor Church. There's always room for more. It's a wonderful help for caregivers to get respite and know their loved ones are having a good time. If you're interested, call 847-890-5334. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Trustee Zarnik. Uh, no report on the liquor commission, Special Men's Committee. Our next big event will be the Memorial Day Celebration at the Pavilion inside the Pavilion.
Yes, it will.
Um, and again, we announced that the Buckingham's will be doing a tree lighting service this year. Um, Midsummer Concert Classic Series, think about it, it's on...less than five months away, where we have Peter Sotera, LeAnn Rimes, Forner, and Michael McDonald. So, we're looking forward to a great year. Again, LeAnn Rimes and Michael McDonald will be at the Town Center, and Peter Sotera and Forner will be at Park LGK, part of the 60th Anniversary Celebration, with the big family fest beforehand, followed up by the, uh, fireworks and concert afterwards. So, looking for a big day that day. Airport update I've already talked about. Mr. Romo, Plan Commission.
Good news this evening. No items under the Plan Commission or the Zoning Board of Appeals, and I'll forego my report this evening.
What about the El Nino here? Aren't you gonna talk about that tonight?
We don't talk about it.
You love El Nino, huh? We like it. It's a nice mild winter for everyone.
Yep.
Look how nice it was this past weekend, warm.
In the 60s, eventually.
Wasn't that great?
You know it's gonna snow tomorrow, right?
We'll see. We'll see. Vito's guys need overtime. I'm trying to help them out. They haven't had much this year, right, Vito?
It's true.
And we're ready for it. Got plenty of salt?
Oh, yeah.
No problem?
No problem.
Okay. Uh, report from the village clerk, 'cause I know she gets busy starting Monday.
Yes. Early voting starts this Monday and runs through, uh, March 14th, Monday through Saturday from 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m.
Good. Looking forward, and again, thank you for all your hard work and getting back. It really helps the community, uh, to have it so convenient and available for people. Okay, let me check again. There's no unfinished business from the village attorney. We move on to any items of new business tonight from any board members. You going to get your badge? Okay, good. Glad to hear it. Mr. Petzel, how was it?
Excellent. Everybody did a fine job.
Think so. How about the gentleman to my left here?
Excellent.
Whoa. You got two excellents in one night.
I praised him.
Two in one night.
Thank you, Mr. Petzel.
Oh, look at all...
Wait, now, that's a kiss-up.
Oh. I don't, I don't know, that was on...
Quite a bonding.
I'm going to have a hard time sleeping tonight. I don't know about you guys, but it's not going to be easy.
They usually do after a meeting.
And the thing is, I like George. George is a nice guy, but, you know, the world spins around for a reason because things keep moving and, you know, we understand, but, you know. Okay, okay. Now, before we adjourn, I think we have one gentleman. Mr. Lucky, want to approach again?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Keeping with the meeting, I will keep it short, just a quick update on the progress, still listening. Here's the standard copies of council. Just, I approached, I want to say thank you there for helping to organize more things. I still have planning on filling the CDBG, Community Development, Black Ranch, which only practical affect that really come. Once we get in there, as you mentioned, you have a foundation to work in the Stan things. I approached George Eliopoulos, who's the remix voter for that location, also in conjunction with Home Depot. And what you'll see before you are actual figures from my budget. As you said, you're always looking for newly innovative ideas. I asked for they, they wanted to see what my parking analysis were and how they would translate into seating, just for capacity, for, you know, overall budget plan purposes.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Thank you, officer. I was hard on, I was hard on myself in the business, and instead of setting it at a thirty-one day month, I took the draconian approach and set it at twenty-eight days, and then based the figures on a five-day work week, and only, there's a miscalculation that says one-third of the month is one-third of the month, not one-quarter of the month, just to show what